All right, well, this is 5:15. Do we have to do like motion stuff to call to this meeting?
You can just call the session to order.
Okay, I'll just call the session to order. This is a special city council work session in city council chambers, May 11th, 2022, 5:15. We are here to discuss, we have a couple of applicants for a vacancy aboard one. This is welcome for our first candidate. It's going to be very informal. It is, I appreciate the interest. If you want to, you want to move up here, Megan? Megan Londo, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I think to start, we've kind of read through your stuff. I might just have the council introduce themselves to you.
Sure.
So that maybe you know us, maybe you don't, and maybe you just kind of tell, you know, who we are, what we do, and how long we've been sitting up here. Kind of give her a little information on us. You want to start sharing? Go ahead.
I have to do the math on my hand. Sharon Corver. Thank you. Already know me. I have been a member of the city council since January of 2015. And I represent half of the city. Basically, I'm an at-large seat for center township.
Grant Blatt, I've been on a little over six years, so 16. And I am Ward four.
I'm Jay Christensen. I am the acting mayor now. I was in Ward one. I think starting my second, third term, eight years. I did what you did to get to this spot, so kind of know the process. I didn't have any, I wasn't, I don't know if it was lucky or unlucky, nobody ran against me to get to where I'm sitting now, but truly, and I noticed through your application, you volunteered, did a lot of volunteer. This is through the ultimate volunteer as far as the city of Harlan, so.
Two years. You know me.
Hi, Megan. Gina Rudolph. Gosh, I'm in my second term, so five years. Yeah. Gosh, time flies when we're having fun. I guess that's about it.
Jane, you too?
I'm city clerk, finance director, Jane Smith, and I've been with the city for a little over six years.
Julie?
Oh, hi.
Hi.
You're excellent. We've met.
Yeah, of course.
I've been with the city just almost a year.
Mr. Geddes in the back row.
Yes, I came to the back of the row. Gene Geddes, city administrator, formerly in the secret J's at, and had a wonderful opportunity to step in the full-time role as administrator back in September of 16.
And then this next part of it, I think, you know, I'm just going to put it out that...
Troy.
Oh, Troy, are you out there? Forgot, sorry.
I'm just blown away outside. Troy Shaven, I think it's two and a half, three years. First fill the seat, I vacated, then obviously three election. I represent the west side of Harlan. I forgot the township name, maybe Woffton, Leavston, or something like that? Or Lincoln, maybe?
Lincoln, Lincoln.
Okay, I'll try and remember that next time better. So I'll just kind of be more than listening as I try.
What's that? All right, thanks, everybody, for the intros. And I guess, Megan, maybe tell us a little bit about you, I guess, who you are, why? Why would you want to sit up here with us?
So I'm Megan Londo, married to Alice Londo, the emergency manager coordinator here. I've lived in Harlan for a long, long time. I moved to Harlan when I was in seventh grade. I didn't graduate from Harlan because I did move in with my dad and graduate from Underwood. But I've always had a sense of, you know, giving back to the community that raised me, Harlan, as well as Elkhorn, that's where I started my school years, which is also Shelby County. So, you know, just getting into the community and doing, you know, the Harlan Community Theater volunteer work that I do has really helped me be around more of the theatrical, musical stuff that I love, but sadly can't participate in because I don't have a singing voice. So I get to see what they do on the back end and help them out that way. I really, you know, want to be here with you guys because I believe Harlan has a lot to offer, you know, young people like me and younger generations, too. And I just want to help bring that kind of flair to your seats and be a part of that growth and commitment.
Okay. I'll just open it up. Any council members have any questions for her? I know Mr. Blatt's probably got 20, but we're going to limit it to one per council member.
Do you have any questions, too?
I'm going to say, too, this is what, I've been on here long enough. This is a team, you know, a pretty good team. When I say it's pretty informal, you know, people maybe watch this or come and see a city council meeting. You know, we have discussions and we may disagree, we may agree. We look for guidance to the gentlemen sitting out there and the young ladies sitting over on the side. We kind of have a feeling that we allow them to do their job and, you know, we are two volunteers to, you know, to sit where we sit. We have a lot of trust in those guys. You know, I guess that's one of the things I see is, you know, not saying you have to be a team player, but is it, is it one of those things that, I'm guessing you've watched a little bit or seen what we do, those things that you see that really piqued your interest in wanting to be here, or is there something that's like, well, you know, I know, yeah, you definitely would bring the age down. I mean, I'm one of those old guys sitting up here. I welcome the youngsters around here to help balance things out a little bit.
I've known each of you, you know, for a long time now, too. And I just know your hearts a little bit, not necessarily every single one of you, but, you know, Gina and Richard there, I know, I know how they are and with their communities and what they want to do, too. So I just, I do see myself as one of them. And so that's why, you know, I really connect with this position here is because I do think I have a lot to offer, you know, as a team player with you guys.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for her?
What are your commitments with, from Ward one?
Which one do you want to be on? Leah's on is HMU. That was a struggle for me. I mean, that is one of the things, time-wise, you know, as far as your employer. A lot of the meetings we have, you're appointed to different committees, noon hour meetings, noon to one, and sometimes it can stretch past that, which can be difficult sometimes. If, you know, I guess would your employer be willing to let you, you know, come to noon hour meetings? You know, four o'clock is a tough one for me. It's on Thursdays, like one Thursday a month is, that's the one. The other one I was on, I think, I'm on, no, personally, I don't remember what I'm on anymore, I guess. So, is vacant. Am I still sitting on the downtown facade? Will I still hold that one or not yet? Because I'd have to look and see which ones I...
There were three committees.
There's one more, too.
Yeah. So there's some committees there that you're committed to away from. I mean, you say, yeah, it's just two meetings. It must be the first and the third Tuesday of every month at 5:15, but there's lots of other stuff going on. Parking wreck, sidewalks, airports. That's an early riser. That's a seven o'clock meeting, which is doable, but you have to get up earlier, I guess. And the other ones...
You guys will all show up for that.
So that's the other comment, I guess, time-wise, yeah. And that's something that you could, you could handle the other meetings, I guess, that you'd be in the role, but...
Sure. So I have, yes, I have talked to my employer about, you know, flexing my schedule a little bit here and there. I do have an hour of lunch, so if I need to flex that whenever, it doesn't necessarily happen at the noon hour every day. So I can make that happen, you know, and even the four o'clock meetings, we do have an opportunity to go in at seven and leave at four. So that's also...
So pretty flexible then, so, okay.
Megan, what do you think is your biggest challenge? If you were chosen to fill this appointed seat, what would that biggest challenge be, your top three challenges?
Sure. I think basically, you know, just the stuff that I don't know, but I do feel confident that, you know, somebody were to ask me a question directly, I would be able to say something along the lines of, I'm not sure on that, but I'm sure maybe one of you guys might know, or I would be able to find the answer for you very quickly. I do have a lot of resources in the city as well, so something like that.
Do you have any goals that you would like to see the city accomplish, like in the next three, five years?
Kind of. I don't know how it would come together, but in Atlantic, they have a group called Atlantic Rising. Basically, just a group of girls who got together and wanted to start revamping some houses to create better renting options in Atlantic. Now, I myself, I'm not very good at painting or carpet work or anything like that, but I would want to see something along those lines. They've done a lot with downtown Atlantic as well. I wouldn't mind, you know, maybe trying to get with them and seeing how they do their work and what kind of work they're able to do within the city. And maybe get something going like that in Shelby County or, you know, here in Harlan. But like I said, I don't know how or when to get that started. But I know you guys would probably have ideas about some of that stuff, too.
Anybody else have anything, first questions for her? Troy ending?
I'm just going to chime in. I think one of the hardest, I think hardest thing is my, what I do personally, professionally, I should say, is realizing government works a whole lot slower than the for-profit industry. So that's somewhat of a challenge sometimes is being aware of, okay, putting a simple sign in, make that just be a two-week job. It takes something, a few years, maybe, or something like that. But also, the other challenge for, not challenge, I should say, but the other thought process is budget. It's a lot different in the city, obviously, you know, limited to tax revenue and stuff like that, but then also $500 means a lot to the departments, you know, stuff like that. So it's just little things I need to get used to a little bit. And especially when you start talking to budget terms, you know, sometimes just listening to our team supervisors, I should say, how they're intent to spend money, but also how they budget and kind of watch through that. Also, I would like the idea of having ideas, present ideas of how, how to bring them within the community or other ideas and keep bringing them up.
Thanks, Troy.
I was just going to say, a lot of, a lot of times, if you ever watch like our meetings and stuff, we have a lot of like unanimous votes, but that's just because a lot of the best things are already brought before us for the city. But not always, but like if there was something we were voting on to change, like going around the square, one lane is the latest one. You know, if it's something you were opposed for or thought that we didn't have all the information, even though, say, you're sitting over here and it's unanimous vote all the way, would you feel comfortable voting against it, sticking to what you think might not be right?
I'm pretty good at stuff like that, yeah. If I, if I feel like I don't have all the information, or if I feel like we could do something better, I would say something.
Yeah, okay. Anybody? You guys have any questions that you want to ask? No?
Gina has something.
You have anything for us? Any questions you have that, like, when you're talking about a lot of times a unanimous vote, but a lot of times those things have come to us, they've already been to a subcommittee, and they've been talked about for an hour or two or three, or maybe three or four meetings in a month, and maybe a couple of months before they actually get to the city council to vote on. So, yeah, maybe people may look and say, when they vote unanimously, but a lot of times that's been, and then we get the notes, you know, for meetings. And, yeah, and a lot of us that maybe if you're not appointed to a committee, say you're not on the sidewalk committee, but there's some things going on, you can, you can always attend those meetings. That's never a problem if you want to, you know, go over and above time-wise, if you want to commit the time to it, to, you know, stay aware of what's going on. And a lot, I would say that is one of the things that, you know, sitting in these chairs, that you can learn to get more involved. You think you want to be involved, you want to volunteer, but you kind of learn that, you know, you sit in some of these meetings and listen to the supervisors talk about what, what they have going on. I mean, those are the people that are out there every day doing, you know, doing the stuff that we just take for granted, you know, things just happen. But that is, it is a time thing, too. And you can make it whatever you want to make it. So, but, yeah, a lot of those things have been discussed, you know, smaller before they get here, and then we do talk about when they get here, too. So, anything you want to ask us as far as, you know, how we do things or...
I don't think so.
No? And I would say, yeah, we've put a lot of trust in the people that, you know, work inside of this building and their team. And that's, Gene and Jane, they've created a good team. Not to say there's not some bumps in the road, but definitely a way to work through a lot of things. So, well, I don't, if nobody has anything else, I'm not going to sit here and grill you for 20 minutes just to grill you. So I do appreciate you, you know, signing, signing your name on the dotted line, because that does, that's the hardest part sometimes, to get somebody to volunteer to do this. So, we will, you know, take all this information, we'll talk to the next candidate, and then we won't probably make any decisions until first part of the first meeting in June, is basically when that will be talked about again, you know, as far as what other recommendation will be from the council on going forward. And then that person...
Probably the 17th, you guys will...
We'll talk about the 17th, and then the first, first meeting in June is when that person would probably take the, sit in the chair, take the oath. So, okay?
Perfect.
All right. Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Megan.
Appreciate you greatly.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your interest.
I want to talk some stuff.
There you go.
Have a good night.
Take care.
There, wherever you like to sit.
Okay. You ready to go back there?
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, no problem. That's why I just really walked in from work and...
Appreciate it.
Sure, don't it. Here we are. Gene, how you doing?
Okay, we are back in session. We have with us now Kyle Lindberg, correct?
That is correct.
And he is showing an interest in applying for Ward one.
That is correct.
That's vacant as of a month or two ago. So can you tell us a little bit about, this is going to be very, we welcome you here, but it's going to be very informal. You know, I'm Jay Christensen.
Yep.
The mayor. I'm a pretty easygoing, laid-back kind of a guy, so not a lot of formality here. So...
That's good.
I just started off by, you know, thanking you for showing some interest. And maybe just tell us a little bit about you, and then we'll do an introduction for each one of us, too, so you kind of know.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you to the council for hearing me here today. Like I said, my name's Kyle Lindberg. I am a resident of Harlan. We relocated here in 2014. My wife and I, we have two children. One is 18, graduating from IKM this year. The other one's 14, is going to be going to Harlan here next year. He's a freshman, so he's excited for that. I am currently the jail administrator for the Shelby County Sheriff's Office. I started working with him in March of 2009. And I took over the administration with him in October of 2015 after a restructure with the new sheriff. And oversee seven or eight employees since October 15. You know, like to camp, like to fish, like to golf, like to do outdoor activities. I'm not very good at physical fitness, obviously, as you can probably see, but hey, I'm 40 years of age, and this body's here, so this body's here to stay. So...
Welcome to the club.
Yeah, right, yeah. We can all do things, some things better. We all have our faults. It's skeletons in the closet, so.
Great, great. We'll just kind of go around the council, introduce, maybe you know us, maybe you don't. We'll start with Sharon.
Sharon Corver. And I represent center township.
Okay.
At the at-large position. Been with the council since January 2015.
Great. Grant Blatt, I'm Ward four, and I just said a little bit ago. I'm in 2016.
You ever have to review this tape, see if it says...
I know, I said the same thing. I don't know if I did it or not.
I'm Jay Christensen. I am the mayor. As of a month or so ago, I was in Ward one for a couple of terms, like 2013-ish is when I got on city council. And now I'm sitting in the chair, one chair, a couple of chairs over as the mayor.
Congratulations on that.
Thanks.
Richard, two years, Ward two.
Gina Rudolph, going on my fifth year here in the council, so learned a lot of things about the city.
We have Troy Shaven, who's online. Troy, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still driving for a few minutes. Troy Shaven, I think, three years now. Lincoln Township, which is in that large area, which covers west side of Harlan, and kind of a lot of people among our lifetime Harlan residents, the minor detoured military and abode, or in one, so Harlanite, wife and I are both, so thanks for coming in.
Not a problem. Thank you, everybody.
Jane Smith, city clerk, finance director. I've been with the city for a little over six years.
I'm Julie Erickson. I'm the administrative assistant, working with Jane. I've been here just about almost a year.
And Gene Geddes with city administration seat since September 2016, and formerly in the mayor role, and been around Shelby County for a number of years, 15 years in Central Iowa.
The next part of this, I guess, we'll just kind of open it up. If any of us have any questions for you, I'll probably start it with just time. You know, the time, and this is, I say this is the ultimate volunteer job. Basically, you put your name on, on the, sign it, and you show up for a couple of meetings, but there's more than a couple of meetings. And you probably know a lot about things, meetings where you're sitting, but this is the couple Tuesdays in the afternoon, but also committees that you might be appointed to, subcommittees. Might be a four o'clock meeting once or so a month. There might be a seven o'clock meeting for a different committee. Noon hours generally is kind of, is that something that would work into your schedule? Is that your employer, your, your life, the family, all that kind of stuff? Could you commit to some of that other stuff, too?
We could say it's been easy to say. I've pretty much been to him to adjust the schedule since 2015. When you're actually in administrative position, unless it's leadership, you have to make a lot of, a lot of changes and a lot of adaptations. So not an issue at all. You know, I sit on a state jail committee. I represent the 25 better, less, smaller in the state of Iowa, represent smaller counties. We meet monthly. There's a lot of outside work and stuff that can go on with that, too. So when you're going to come into this, you know, as far as this, I understand there's volunteer, there's time, there's commitment, and that's something you have to be willing to do, and something that I am willing to do.
You should have bring a note from your wife, make sure that she okayed this.
I did. I did actually get the clarification from the wife first, and then I went to the sheriff second, because I wanted to make sure it wasn't a good...
Good man, you're smart guy.
Yes, because, you know, she was going for it and, you know...
What day of the week is your monthly meeting with the sheriff?
With the sheriff, with the sheriff's association. We usually meet on Wednesdays, and it's in the morning during the day, so it's usually 10 a.m. type thing. You know, it's, but that's easily adjustable. You know, COVID kind of put everything on the back burner for a while, but we're, Zoom, obviously, has become an option. I think you see more and more businesses and stuff like that. So a lot of times, we can just take care of a lot of things over the phone. But it's, you know, I mean, I, I sit on the board for the Harlan Golf and Country Club for a short period of seven months to fulfill the term for a person who had left out there. You kind of got the commitments and stuff and the time efforts, you know, the email chains, the communications after outside. And it's, I'm unfortunate, that generation where I would say, I'm not glued to my phone, but I'm married to my work. Good things most of the time, but I'm also one of those that likes to see things to the end. I take pride in what I do, and, you know, just the hashtag of being raised correctly. You know, when you start something, if it's something I'm going to commit to, you're going to get 100 or 10% from me. So that's an attribute and a quality I've always had and to this day. So, yeah. And you could probably ask any one of the county officials that I work for or I've done for, and, you know, they'll probably have a pretty good recommendation. So I'm hard worker, determined, and willing to put that time and effort in. So give it back to the city in this case, so.
Sharon, anything? Come to your chair.
Just as I asked the other candidate, what would be your biggest challenge if you were to be appointed to this position, or considered to be a challenge, or top three challenges?
Well, I obviously think, you know, probably the biggest thing of anybody would sit on city council, especially in city council, fielding complaints. I mean, you know, I've been fielding complaints and from, you know, I guess you could say essentially since I started working in the jail. Obviously, it could be a different complaint type, but I've also had to oversee a lot of things within the public as far as, you know, things related to the jail aspect. And we always had a positive outcome to it. Sometimes people don't like the answer that you have to give them, but you have to look what's best for the situation and the situation you're dealing with. So my biggest philosophy, I would say, is to be fair, firm, and consistent in here, both sides. And, you know, you're going to have to make, only make that decision. It may be a decision, you know, towards a punishment or something, or in this particular place, you know, a policy or a change in policy that may affect somebody. Somebody may be in favor of it, some people may not be in favor of it, but if it's what's best going forward, that's what you have to do. So I always think that's the biggest challenge, because at first, when I first started doing it, it was like, you're going to lose friends, you're going to lose, well, this, but, you know, that's unfortunate. That's, that's, that's the name of the game when you get into politics or local city, county government. You represent an entity, and you have to put the best foot forward, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
You took all mine.
Do you have anything?
I'll steal Gina's.
Okay.
I'm going to hear it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You go ahead.
I have a different one, so.
Oh.
You can use it.
You're going to try and stump me, put me on the spot.
Do you have any agendas or goals with city council?
You know, main thing is just, I, you know, when you have, that's kind of an open-ended question.
Well, I'm very well aware.
On that, you know, essentially, everybody, probably the cliche answer is that it's always give back. But, you know, you look, you're, you're a younger generation, you look back into it, I guess I say younger generation. I'm 40, but I'm in that middle section, I guess you could say, is you don't see a lot of people stepping forward in, you know, local city, county government, you know, to fulfill these seats. And it's like, if you have the option to, you know, donate your time, volunteer, and make a change, you know, the biggest thing is the Einstein effort. You know, I mean, the method is, you know, you have an hour to solve a problem, you're going to be spending 55 minutes to think about the problem, probably five minutes to look forward towards a solution. And that's the part of the problem, is everybody wants to be part of the problem, but nobody wants to be part of the solution. So, you know, I guess maybe we aren't one of those rare groups that likes to step forward and try and solve things. And my agenda, you know, would be to make the city better, and what I can do and represent, I guess, the citizens of Ward one and the city of Harlan in a well-respected manner.
Got to be better than the last guy, so.
Yeah, I got big shoes to fill.
That's why we're replaced.
Right?
Yeah. So you got enough. Hopefully, there's more room for you to move somewhere you can, right?
Okay, Gina, your new question. Greg stole yours.
I was just going to talk a little bit about budget. I assume that you do some budget work.
Correct, yes.
In your current role. We do that. You know, sometimes our pennies only go so far. We have to tell people not this year, or find an action plan. Do you have any thoughts on how you handle some of those?
Yeah. Budget is always a fun time. You know, within my, as a department head for the jail, I oversee the jail budget that we present to the county board of supervisors. You have to give a little, you have to be able to take a little, and obviously, like you said, tell people no. Crunching numbers, you know, I can, I can be good at. Ultimately, you know, what they always say is they want to be what's best for the taxpayer, for the taxpayer dollars. You want to save the money, but you also have the entities that places that you need to spend the money. So you have to sometimes take the priority of your needs over your wants at that particular time and be able to prioritize those particular sections and know where you can take from to make some adjustments, or, you know, ultimately ask for a percentage increase. And that's, you know, not a kudos to our back, but over there for your, the county, we were put in a 10% three-year budget cut, and that was very tough at that point in time, because in my particular section, I can't look at you and present and say, hey, I'm going to need $780,000 to operate this jail for one year, because we're only going to book 450 inmates in, and they're only going to stay an average of two days. You're kind of shooting, I guess I would say, swinging in the dark essentially, to find out where you need to be. And, you know, overall, my projections of, we've got pat on the back, because we did our 10% decrease, we were still able to maintain operational flow and, you know, and not make the tax levy essentially go up. So overseeing, yes. I mean, do I like budgets? I mean, really, who does? I mean, because you're, it's like...
Gina, Gina.
You got to play it in the grave. You got to be, you got to be good at it. But, yeah, same thing, go back to fair, firm, and consistent. So, you know, you have to be able to say no, and if you get told no, you got to find the workaround around it and make the best of the situation.
Okay, we'll go to the numbers guy on the phone, too. He loves this stuff, too. So Troy, you have anything for Kyle?
You brought up a good point. I think one of the challenges, I forgot to mention last time, is realizing that Gene and Jane are the administrators, and we're kind of just more of the directors and have them do the work, and our job is to direct them and give them and hold them accountable for running things. And to me, that's kind of a challenge with small towns and everything like that, where people are going to come up, say, hey, you should be doing this and that, and you kind of got to tell who's responsible for it. So that's all I really had to. And I like the ideas of, you know, the other part is you already work for government. Nothing's a short fix, or most of the projects are long-term. So working through with them and trying to get them to fruition takes a while, maybe frustrating, but it's another thing. And you already talked about the budgets already, so. but it's another thing and you already talked about the budgets already, so.
Okay. Any questions for us?
I, I guess I really don't. I mean, you know, I'm hoping the opportunity will present itself and hoping the fact to be able to work side by side with you guys and kind of go from there. I mean, you guys are here on your own terms. It's not like nobody's forcing you guys to be here, so, you know, I mean, you asked the question, why do you do what you do? It's probably the same answer that I would say. You know, you want to give back and be here, so. I guess I don't have any questions.
Well, we appreciate you coming in. We appreciate you, you know, showing an interest because you're all right. That is one of the biggest things in small towns is, you know, volunteers, the committees that we, we're all on, but we also have to find other people